All right, we're live. Hello everyone and welcome to your latest edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session. I am Coach Ashley. We are here with our founder and creator today, Greg Kilwin.
Hey everyone, welcome. We're glad you're here.
Super excited to have you all here today. We're talking about a topic that is important to everyone seeking to create a business and life of freedom. And so today, we're going to be talking about time management. Now, it sounds like a really remedial, kind of like ew, it sounds like a boring thing to talk about, but it's actually really important. And I think that if you can get a couple of key things right, it can actually be kind of fun for you. I mean, wouldn't it be fun to have more time to do what you really like doing, right? Wouldn't it be more fun to have more time available to, I don't know, do nothing? I personally enjoy that the most, those moments where you can just, okay, there's nothing else to do. This is good. I know you guys know what I'm talking about. All right, so as you're coming in, leave us a message. Hop over here in the chat. Let us know where you're coming in from. We're excited to chat with you today. And I have a few questions that I want to ask you as well in a poll. So I'm going to go ahead and open up my slides here so you guys can see the presentation. Don't be shy. Come out and say hello. We're excited to have you. All right. Perfect. Greg, can you see my screen?
Yes, I can. Looks awesome.
Awesome. Okay, I'm actually going to stop my video so you guys can see the whole deal while I'm sharing here. All right. Perfect. All right. So again, welcome. This is the Get Growing Weekly Work Session. If you're brand new and you're not familiar with us, we are a complete business ecosystem for you, Young Living Distributor, seeking to better manage your business and what you're already doing, or to scale up your game and to get more done more effectively and grow your business utilizing the amazing tool that is the internet, right? We're going to call it a tool today and not the gigantic, well, everything that it actually is. All right. So today, we're going to talk about time management. We're going to talk about running your business like a boss. And there's a reason why we have that like a boss designation in there. And it's not just to be cheeky. You know, I think that a lot of us really understand that there's a really big difference in terms of how we spend our time when we're working for a boss versus when we're working for ourselves. So welcome. My first question for you guys is, have you ever found yourself in this position? Have you ever worked for hours on end, finished up or stopped what you were doing and wondered, what did I actually get done? Can I see a quick show of hands? Have you ever felt this way? Yep. It's frustrating, right? You feel like you're on a hamster wheel. Next question, how would it feel for you? Leave me a comment in the question or in the chat here. How would it feel for you to be able to sit down and know exactly what to do when it's time to work on your business? How would it feel? We've seen any answers come in, Greg?
Some yeses, but no answers yet. Oh, we're empowering. Here we go.
There we go. Yeah, absolutely. So today, we're going to help empower you with the tools and the mindset necessary to help you get more out of your business and most importantly, more out of your time. Because at the end of the day, you didn't decide to start sharing and living and working this toward, you know, replacing a job for you or your spouse. You didn't, you didn't start this in order for it to become another job for you, right? You saw this and you, and you saw the potential to create a life of freedom. So it's important that the way that we go about growing our business enables that life of freedom as opposed to tying us down with busyness, right? So the benefit of having a boss, when you think about it, is that you always know what to do, right? You've got somebody standing over your shoulder and telling you, this is what I expect of you. This is what you do between the hours of nine and five, right? It's very clearly defined. But see, we don't have that in this business, right? And you also don't want a boss, right? Who here wants a boss? No hands. I already know that. All right. So today, what we're going to talk about first are the most profitable ways to spend your time. You're going to get a little bonus here as well. I call this my five ingredient recipe for prospecting because hint, hint, it is probably the most powerful use of your time if you are staying organized in the process. I'm going to tell you about a kitchen tool that'll help you get 10 times more done than you already are. You're going to learn a mindset hack that will skyrocket your results, some easy automation and infrastructure that'll help you scale, and how to balance your online marketing. Because a lot of you guys are here wanting to really understand how you can build an online presence to attract leads to your business, right? We're going to talk about how to balance the pursuit of that alongside the activities that produce income that you need to make sure you maintain focus on, no matter what you're doing with your online presence. All right. So I'm sorry, this isn't animating. It should be animating. So the most profitable uses of your time, you guys, this is it. Period, period, end of story, period. First, prospecting and intentional networking. I put this asterisk here for a reason. Intentional networking, meaning you're going out and you're meeting people in the interest of elevating and growing your network to find more people that you can help right now. So not just, hey, I'm going to go make new friends. That is of value, right? But when you go to say, a local business networking group, right, which you absolutely should do, and even if you are a shy person, I recommend that you take on an exercise such as that, or even Toastmasters, to help you get more comfortable with communicating with people, introducing yourself to people that you don't know. Because even if you don't see yourself becoming a great big loud blue red personality, you do need to understand that a big part of your success in growing this business is being able to inspire belief and action in others. And you need to embolden yourself first. So in intentional networking, you're reaching out and you are talking to people with a very specific intent of digging through and finding someone that you can show a presentation to today. That's what I mean by intentional networking. That's a profitable use of your time. Another profitable use of your time is inviting people to review information. So folks who are already a part of your network, people you're already connected to, calling them, texting them, inviting them specifically to right now, or at a scheduled date and time, review information. It could be inviting to a class that you're having. It could be inviting to sit down, and so on. Sharing that information. Again, this could be in a class. This could be one-on-one. This could be sharing a video. There are many tools that you can use to expose people to Young Living, the opportunity to get their premium starter kit, get on a central awards, and should they be so inspired, begin the path of sharing that you've chosen. Following up on the information that you've shared. This is an insanely profitable activity, you guys. It's one step away from the finish line. And it's the one that most of us really let slip, right? Not following up after you have shared the product, the ecosystem of Young Living, the opportunity attached to it, not following up. That's, that's one of the biggest wastes of your time ever, right? Because everything that you've done up until that point to be able to share information with somebody, you're throwing it out the window if you don't follow up, right? So following up, really important. Asking for a decision, right? This is, hey, are you ready to get started? A lot of us shy away from asking that question. There's no shame in it. You've put in a lot of work to get up to this point where you've shared information with somebody. You put a lot of effort into a class that you've developed. Have people understand that it is a respectful move to be able to answer yes or no to the question, are you ready to get started? And there's no, there's no issue and there's no pushiness in you simply asking that question. So always ask that question. It is one of the most profitable uses of your time. Another one, and this is something that a lot of us don't do, is asking someone who says no for a referral. When somebody says, ah, I don't think that's for me. Okay, that's cool. Well, tell me, tell me, tell you what, who do you know who would benefit from cleaning their, their, you know, their cabinets out of toxic ingredients, right? You could even ask questions along those lines that kind of speak to the no that that person just shared with you, right? Because there's every logical reason in the world to ditch and switch and to move over to Young Living's products, right? So ask them the question and kind of turn it back around. They're going to go, oh, well, you're going to go, maybe I shouldn't do this because the person I'm thinking about just might say yes, and that might be my first member that I sign up, right? So always ask, well, who do you know? When you have a no, it's okay. It's okay for people to say no. You want people to say no so that you can move on and continue sharing. But don't forget, you are growing a business just like any other business out there. If you're a massage therapist and somebody doesn't want a massage right now, would it be weird for you to ask them if they know of anybody who would benefit from one? Right? If, if, if you opened a sandwich restaurant and you had a friend that was allergic to gluten, you're not going to be, you know, you're not going to be offended that that person can't eat there. But do they know people who aren't allergic, who like sandwiches? Would it be weird for you to ask them to talk to their friends about the business that you have put all this effort into starting? Always ask no's for referrals. It's not weird. There's nothing wrong with it. And it's a very profitable use of your time. All right. Duplicating all of these things above everything that I've said so far. Making sure that once you have successfully brought someone on board, they're interested in sharing as well. Making sure that they understand that these are the things that are most important for them to spend their time on. See, the fact is, you could, as a, as a new person who has, who has come into Young Living, who has had their eyes light up at the possibility of what this could do for them as a business, they don't need to know anything about the oils, about the products, to be able to go enroll 10 people right now. Think about it. There are resources that can be pointed to. There are, there are guidelines. There are, there's, there's everything out there. There's such a depth of information available, whether it's on Young Living's website or elsewhere on the web. Most of it is really just Young Living's own information. You don't have to be the expert of experts to be able to share. What you do need to make sure that you spend your time on is making sure that you do these things. And then finally, tracking the activity that you are spending your time on. This is actually one of the most profitable activities that you can engage in, this tracking, because you are a business, right? You're building a business. The best businesses in the world, right? They are based on systems, right? They, they measure and they track and they systematize the work that they do. Think about this for a moment. You've probably heard the statistics before. There is a scant percentage of businesses, traditional brick and mortar businesses that succeed. I want to say it's like 5% in their first five years. The success rate of franchises is, I want to say triple that in, in the same period of time. And the reason why is because they have systems. And what those systems are based off of is, is, is actual tracked activity. It's not guesswork. When you track, you know what you've done. So if you don't like your check, right? You don't like the size of your check, you couldn't go back. If you don't like the, the, the number of your OGV, right? Or your PV, you can track and see, well, what have I done, right? Like, oh, this isn't working for me. Well, how have you been working? And how can you change the way that you've been working? So make sure that you are tracking what you do. And this is something that you can actually do in Get Oil-ing. We'll talk about that here in just a little bit. All right. Now, there are also secondary activities. Now, these are very important as well. First, branding and lifestyle. What this would encompass is making posts on social media, on Instagram, on Facebook, and so on. Sharing happy things about your life, sharing motivating and positive things, and just kind of getting your energy out into the world, getting engagement with people, and asking questions, and, and hosting conversations on your respective profiles. This is definitely valuable. Is it the most valuable use of your time? No, but it is valuable. Because you know, from those conversations you start, you can get over into the DMs and start that prospecting conversation, right? All right. Next is content production and syndication. Now this, for those of us who are seeking to build a brand online where people come to us as opposed to us having to chase other people, we want to create content so that people discover us and want to learn more from us and ultimately say, hey, I really would like to understand how I can get more from, from you. Like, how do I buy this? How do I work with you? That's what we're aiming for. And so creating content in the form of blogs or videos that you can share with others, from a value perspective, here I'm teaching you something, I'm sharing a recipe and so on. This is a valuable activity as well. It's actually something that, from a passive perspective, can cumulatively over time, bring you leads on autopilot. But it's still a secondary activity, because you can't build momentum with a blog, right? You, you'll get some hits over time. It's a valuable thing to support you, but you should still focus on the stuff on that first page. All right, training. This is another thing. Super important to sharpen the sword, you guys, but it's secondary. You don't need to know everything to share, right? Because sharing isn't telling, it's showing. Sharing is showing something, a resource that you didn't have to create. You don't have to be an expert at Young Living to excel and rise rank quickly. All right, personal development, another one, non-negotiable, super important. It's secondary in terms of how you are spending your time, right? Because if you spend, you know, five hours a day, or if you've only got 10 hours a week to spend on your business, and you spend six of them on personal development, and you're not just, just going absolutely bananas in those other four, how much are you really getting done to grow your business, right? To, to expand your revenue, to, to grow the size of your member base? All right, training your team. Guys, this is another one. We slip into management mode, especially those of you who find yourself plateaued in the business. Oops, sorry. The, the fact is, is that when we, when we reach a certain rank and we start to really experience some of the success that we're looking for, we slip into manager mode. And the thing is, this is a business that duplicates. People will duplicate what you do. And do you want to duplicate people becoming managers? Or do you want to duplicate leaders of a pack? Right? So training your team, I put an asterisk by here because it is obviously important to have your, your team trained and for them to be plugged into information. But the fact is, just like not having to know every single thing about every single essential oil, you don't have to know every single thing about growing a business. You could literally plug your team into the trainings that we do here at Young Living, or the trainings that your upline does, or ideally both, right? Or, or that leaders in the company do. It doesn't even have to be an immediate upline. You don't have to be the expert. I think that's probably one of the most important things. Maybe just if you have a sheet of paper and a pen, which I hope you do, go ahead and grab one right now. If you don't, write that down. I don't have to be the expert. Because at the core of this business, your success really relies on duplicating the simplest activities, which are the ones that I shared on that first page. All right. And then social networking. And see, this is, when I mentioned that first one on our previous page here, that intentional networking, this is different. Social networking is, is really something that is passive. It is something that is joyful for a lot of us. It is also something that is hugely time-sucking for us if we're not doing this correctly, right? But it is, it's a valuable thing to engage in. You don't want to be a ghost online on social media, but understand it's secondary to the profitable activities. All right. The fact is, guys, even if you've got a minimal amount of time, or what you perceive to be a minimal amount of time to work on your Young Living business, you can do it all. If you invest efficiently in what you're doing, if you invest in efficiency, right? If you spend your time building up the resources that serve you and buy your time back, and you prioritize the profitable activities above all else. So here it, real quick, this is my five-part prospecting recipe. When I got involved in my first network marketing company, these were the things that I learned the hard way. I needed to make sure that I did more often than anything else. And I promise you, this is a recipe for success, whether you are currently at Silver or if you are currently at Star, you can grow this week if you get these five things in place and do these five things with them. So first, our ingredients. First, you need a sharing tool to point to. Now, I know, I know, we don't have Smell-O-Vision. If one of you would like to invent that, I think we'd all benefit greatly. I think you'll, you'll surpass Jeff Bezos and income if you can, if you can figure out Smell-O-Vision. But you can successfully share Young Living without being in person. And I recommend that you have a tool that you are capable of sharing with others, that you can point to immediately. If you've got a class coming up, that's great. But if somebody has 30 minutes right now, don't you want them to see what they can see right now, right? So make sure you have a tool that you can point to. I highly recommend that it's something that has a holistic view of Young Living. Eventually, you'll want to have something like this that you create yourself, but, but have something that shares the whole of Young Living and the opportunity as well, right? Maybe you've got one that does both, and then one that just does the product. It's fine. Have a tool. Fact is, you guys, when, when I got started in my first network marketing business, I shared an hour and 45 minute long recorded webinar with people that I didn't know on Facebook. I became a top recruiter in my company. It was a terrible video. I wasn't in it. And like I said, it was an hour and 45 minutes long. It was not a good video. It went into all the details. That's fine, but that's beside the point, right? You can do this. It doesn't have to be perfect. So have a sharing tool to point to. Have a script if you need one, right? And, and what I mean by this is, if you are kind of just getting started, a quick Google search, or maybe speaking to someone in your upline about, you know, prospecting questions, things that you can ask others when you strike up conversations, especially around Young Living, you know, where you can ask questions about, you know, maybe some of the products that they use at home, or maybe, and I love this one, what are your goals this year? Everybody is going to say to get healthier, right? And everybody is going to say something on, along the lines of, to, you know, a vacation or some kind of life improvement that extra income would support. Both of these are ripe opportunities for you to ask more questions that then get them curious about what it is that you have that can help them achieve those things that they just told you that they wanted. So look for or compile, think about this yourself, you know, some questions. And, and, and when I say script, I put that in quotes because you really, really don't need to actually use a script, right? This is, the idea here is to have a flow that you can follow. And it is something that you will organically develop over time if you are devoted yourself to training on prospecting, which again, even if you're shy, guys, really recommend that you do that. If you want your results to, to flip in terms of the speed at which your organization is growing, do this and get your team to do it. And you will see significant rapid change. It's uncomfortable, admittedly, but you get good at it. You get really good at it. And you can go anywhere you want in this business and as fast as you want. All right. Then you need a place to find people. This could literally be just out about in the world. It could also be on Facebook, right? It could be you making a post on, on your Facebook profile, asking folks a question about their biggest goal this year, right? That's, that's, that's always such a good question to ask because it's positively oriented and people like to talk about themselves. And this just, it creates a perfect recipe for you to then go off into a private message and start talking about those goals and seeing how you might be able to help them achieve those goals with what you know that they don't, right? And what you know is obviously centered around Young Living, the product, the opportunity, or both. All right. Then you also need a contact manager. Now, those of you who are already with us here at Get Oil-ing, you have one of these, and it is fabulous. There is a depth of resources that are piled in it. It's not just a way or a place to keep names and phone numbers. You can do all kinds of great stuff with it. This is one thing that I didn't have, even though I, I was one of the top recruiters in my first company. I didn't have a contact manager. I was just, I was a tornado. And being a blue personality, you know, you tend toward disorganization already. So I just, I was just always, always, always talking to, you know, 10 people in the, in the Facebook chat, trying to see who could get on a video right now. And if I had had a contact manager back then, I, things would have been very different. So have a contact manager. That way you can keep on top of who you're talking to, right? Who needs to be followed up with? Because there's always an opportunity. When you don't know what to do, look and see who hasn't been followed up with in your contacts. Who have you shown this to? Who hasn't given you a decision yet? Return to them. Who is in your contacts that you haven't shown this to at all, right? Who, who do you know that could be added to your contacts for you to reach out to? Always have that. It's really important. And then you need a means to connect. Now, what I mean by this is, is you need a means to, to connect one-on-one, that is not texts or Facebook Messenger or something similar. Because the nature of chat is that people can often walk away from it. And you lose the conversation entirely, right? So people can kind of ghost you there. People can't ghost you when you're on the phone or on a video call. So you need a thing that you can use to connect with people. So you're on Facebook, or you are out in the world, you've got a phone, you've got a contact manager, or you've got video software, if you're doing this globally. You've got a contact manager, you've got your questions that you like to ask. All right. Then what you're going to do with these things? First, you're going to meet someone new in that place that you find people. Then you're going to start a conversation, ask them questions that lead to an exposure, and then transition to phone or video as quickly as possible. And then you share the link to that exposure tool, that sharing tool over there in your ingredients. Ideally, you're going to do this via phone or via video chat. Or you're going to send a link to them while you're on the phone with them. Again, making sure that nobody is going to ghost, right? That they're actually going to respect your time and they're going to review the information that they have agreed to view. So you do that, and then you follow up immediately, right? So if it's a video and you know how long it is, you say, okay, I'm going to call you back in 15 minutes if it's a 15-minute video, right? So that makes sense. Are you going to come back to them and say, hey, so what did you like most about what you saw? Right? So these are the five things that you need to have in place and the five steps that you need to take to actually go out there and start getting more exposures right now. This collection, this little recipe yields one of the most profitable activities that you can participate in to support the growth of your business and rapidly. All right. That's a big one right there. All right. And then, of course, you want to collect that decision, obviously being the most important thing. Why would you go through all of this effort and not ask for a yes or a no? And then repeat, and have your team do the same. That's really it. This is the formula to growing a network marketing business online in the most simplest form possible. All right. Now, getting back to this idea of how we manage our time. All right. There's, there's a lot of things that we can do. You know, say, even looking at everything that Get Oil-ing has to offer. It is a complete suite, a professional platform for you to brand yourself and to reach and build a following online as big as you please, and have people coming to you directly, self-selecting, and asking you how they can work with you. That's what this is set up for. And that's really what our trainings are designed to help you achieve, especially where we get into more depths of the features and, and the specific, you know, components and things that you can do with this. But here's a thing, and this is a really important thing that you need to know. If you don't already have an education or a background in internet marketing, or just marketing in general, just pick one thing at a time to learn, right? You don't need to learn...
I don't hear you anymore, Ashley. Getting some comments here that we lost voice. I wonder if the internet cut out. We'll just give her a minute here. Yep. Yeah, I'm seeing that. So I'm seeing several of you saying the lost sound. So I will, yeah, we'll just give her a minute here and see if she comes back. And if she doesn't, I can see where this goes. I can... There we go. Send her a message here. Sorry about this. All right, sorry. Okay, so I don't have the remainder of her slide deck, but what I can do here is demo a little bit of what we've got going on here for the coach. First of all, can you, can you hear me? I think she's still there because the slide just changed. Okay. Okay, Kim, thank you. Yeah, I think it's probably just the audio. Yeah, I think it's probably just the audio. Okay. Thank you, Wendy, Jack. I can, yeah, sorry. Bear with us, we'll see if we can get this back here. I just sent her a text and let me see, that's a good question if. No, she's not showing muted. Ashley, I don't know if you can hear me, but.
Hey, can you hear me now?
Yes, you're back.
All right. Sorry about that, you guys. I have a Bluetooth headset and I just saw the chat lighting up and I saw, and I couldn't hear you. So sorry about that. All right, so whereabouts would you say you lost me?
I think it was back one slide.
All right.
Yeah, I think this was a slide.
Okay, good deal. All right, sorry about that, you guys. All right, so like I mentioned, you want to do one thing at a time and do only that thing. So if you're going to be prospecting on Facebook, you're not scrolling the news feed on Facebook. You're not checking your phone, you're not checking email. You shut everything else down and you only do that thing. If you are going to write a blog post, you're not checking your email, you're not scrolling the web, you're not responding to texts, you're only writing a blog post, right? One of the most effective changes that we can make in our productivity is to choose to only do one thing at a time and do that for a set period of time. So I'm going to say I will sit down and I'm going to give myself an hour to write a blog post and then go share it on social media, right? One hour. And if you have preparation and organization in place, then you could even get that done in less time. But give yourself a set period of time and do nothing other than that thing for that period of time. Because multitasking is the killer of efficiency. This is really one of the most important things. If you feel like you don't have enough time, you probably do have enough time. You've got divided focus. And divided focus kills productivity, it kills creativity. You could get a lot more done, a lot more effectively, a lot better if you just choose to do one thing at a time. What I want to recommend that you guys do is to create time blocks and batch your work. Now, again, you know, especially for those of us who have big ambitions. We have a lot of things that we want to create. There's a lot of components that we want to have in place for our personal brand or just for the regular operating of our business day-to-day. Create time blocks to fulfill the things, right? The creation and the management of things that need to get done so that busy work doesn't bleed over into and take up all of your available time. So like I just mentioned, doing one thing for a set period of time. Let's just say that on Mondays, you will queue up and schedule on social media your posts for the rest of the week. So give yourself an hour and you're going to create a post to drop Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, right? You can also schedule emails that go out, right? You can schedule promotions to go out, things like that. So I'm going to work on, or you say you want to create a campaign. I'm going to create a campaign on this date and in this period of time and only in this period of time and do nothing else. You'll be surprised just how much you can actually get done if you use this approach. I actually, this was revelatory. There is a coaching group that Greg and I are a part of and we watched a training fairly recently about how this guy who's super productive, working at a very high level in software field and a coach to some of the most successful and easily recognizable names in internet marketing, to be fair. He talked about how in, I believe it was an hour, no, it was like four hours. In four hours, he can create content for six months. Something to that effect. And the fact is, it can be done if you have organization around the way that you're approaching it and you have a plan in place. Obviously, we're not going into that degree of depth here today. But just to give you an idea, that is literally something that you can do. It is possible. And you don't need to be an efficiency machine right now to be able to work ahead in advance. Whether it's in Get Oiling where you can schedule emails out in advance, you could create campaigns that drip information. You can also on social media schedule there as well. So you can remove the need to log into Facebook, you know, regularly throughout the day, for instance, if that's something that you're using. So just to put that thought in your head there, creating time blocks on your schedule. Now, this is my favorite three-dollar tool, this kitchen tool to boost your productivity, right? So this is a literal, physical reminder that even ticks and dings for you that, you know, you can, the reason why I love this is because you can actually take your phone, shut it off and get your work done and just use this, right? So instead of turning an alarm on on your phone, use this and just give yourself an hour. Say, okay, I am only going to spend an hour on Facebook and I am going to be prospecting and following up with people. And that's it. And after this bell rings, I'm done and I'm moving on to the next thing. If you need to plan for an event, make a list of the things that you need to do, set your timer, get it done in that period of time. The majority of us in this business, especially with all of the trade shows and the local events and live stuff that we do, we let planning suck up entirely too much of our time to where we don't have enough time to spend on the profitable activities. All right? So consider investing your time in things that create more time for you. And we are going to talk about that today as well. Highly, highly recommend getting one of these kitchen timers or an egg timer to help you batch your time and focus on one thing. Now, do just one activity until that timer runs out and then move on. And then record and track what you just did in your Get Oiling Digital Upline Coach. Every activity conceivable that has some primary or secondary effect on the profitability of your business is listed inside of Get Oiling. And if you don't see it, you can add it, right? So inside your Digital Upline Coach, everything is there. Track yourself, track the activity that you are undertaking. Because again, if you don't like your results, go back and check your work, right? All right, because you can't improve what you can't measure, right? And you want to improve. We all want to improve and to get better. If you want to succeed in this business, you have to be someone worthy of following, right? And right now, you are somebody worthy of following. But we need to become somebody worthy of being followed by tens of thousands of people, right? So we need to continually improve ourselves, continually improve the way that we work. All right, so our number one mindset shift for productivity, you guys, this is the most important thing. Progress is perfection. Stop waiting for the perfect circumstances to invite someone to review information. Stop waiting for the perfect circumstances to make a video. If you want to share your story and start inspiring people, you will get better at everything the more you do it, right? So you're not going to sit and watch sixteen hours of training and suddenly have a leg up on somebody who's been doing something every day for six months, right? You need to go out and just start getting it done and trust that you will improve and that you will get better and better and better with each thing that you choose to master. Your improvement will come with practice. You gotta move your feet. All right. And then, of course, you want to invest in automation and infrastructure, right? Remember when I just, I mentioned a couple of minutes ago, you want to invest in things that give your time back to you, things that make you more efficient so that you can devote more time to the more profitable stuff. So investing your time into building automation and infrastructure so you can buy your time back. This is something that Get Oiling is fabulous for. All right, so let's talk about this. Automation. The idea here is for you guys to work once to develop a resource that can exponentially duplicate your efforts. Because smart work is better than hard work. Can I get a hand raise on that? Raise your hand if you agree, smart work is better than hard work. Yeah. All right, so along the lines of automation, you can create funnels. And if that sounds boring to you, don't worry. We have an in-depth training, several of them actually. If you go to youtube.com/getoiling, you will see all of the recordings for this series. And we actually have several that talk about how you can create a funnel to automate the exposure process, to automate the collection of information from a contact in a contact manager, right? Because when somebody visits a landing page, which is the front page of a funnel, they put their contact info in so you don't have to. And then on the next page, they've got a video that exposes the product, the opportunity and such to them, which again, you don't have to stand in front of them and break everything down. You've got it there in a video. And then if that funnel has a campaign attached to it, then maybe that immediately sends back a, hey, what did you like the most about that? Hey, let's schedule a time to sit down together and talk about what the best oils might be for you to get started with. Right? That's what we're talking about here, automating so that you can do more. If you had a system like that, like I just described, how many more people do you think you could share Young Living with inside of the same period of time than if you were to go and explain out and tell how everything works? I mean, you could show one person in the space of time, doing it, you know, by hand, if you will, than you would with a system like this, you could show a hundred people. You could show an unlimited number of people, really, right? So create funnels, campaigns to educate your prospects, to share the sharing tool that we talked about in that recipe slide, to introduce your new members to their kit, which again, this is not something, you don't have to be present for every part of that process. You don't need to sit down and talk about the kit with every single person. This is something that you would be served for every single new person who becomes your member. You've got a campaign that sends them out and hey, here are all of these oils that you've got and here's where you need to find all of your stuff. And oh, by the way, if you're not on essential rewards yet, you really should be. Here's how you do it. Put that into a campaign, how much time does that save you, right? It's just dripping on them so that they're informed and you don't have to spend your time manually doing these things. You could also teach your team in this way as well. If somebody says, hey, I'd really like to start sharing this as a business and you have some best practices and training in place, put that into a campaign. Let it teach them. It's still you teaching them, but now you can teach thousands in the time that you would normally spend teaching one, right? You can also create online classes, again, something that you can do in Get Oiling. And we'll show you what some of this looks like here in just a little bit. You can create online classes in your members area. This is our newest feature with Get Oiling as of the airing of this video right now, where you can have your expertise or borrowed expertise, to be fair, right? There's a lot of us who leverage resources from third parties that have great teaching information that save us time because the information's the same, right? You can have that member area to teach your prospects, to inform your members of promos and to educate and communicate with your team and have folks learn at their own pace. Again, you not having to be the one that does every single thing all the time. Because think about this, right? You want a business that works for you, right? Not you working for a business. You want a business that pays you even when you're sleeping, right? We gotta have these things in place if you want to make that a reality sooner than later. All right, now let's talk about infrastructure. This is where you would create something internally, like a follow-up plan. Again, a really cool feature inside of Get Oiling where you can remind yourself and have these emails that come out to you and say, hey, today, here's the list of things that you need to do. You need to follow up with this person who reviewed information three days ago. You need to follow up with these people who were at the trade show last week. You need to send, you need to have a care call with this person whose anniversary is coming up, right? Stuff like that. You create a follow-up plan so that every time that you have a process where you follow the same kind of steps with a new member or with a teammate or with a prospect, you've already got those things built in so you don't have to juggle in your mind exactly what you need to be doing. You have it laid out in front of you as if a boss or ideally, an assistant delivered you that list of things that you need to accomplish today. How cool would it be if you woke up and you knew exactly what you needed to do in that business today in real time based on your activity in your business? It's amazing, right? So another thing that you can do is create saved replies. This is really powerful. This is where you can save time when you're performing repeat activities like welcoming a new member, right? Sharing all of the information that they need to know. You can have that housed in a single beautiful email that you just pull down from a menu and send off when somebody gets started, right? You could also create your newsletters in this same space. Again, creating a format for them so that when, say you're going to do that with the monthly promos and such, you already have it made. And so when the promos are released that night, you go in and you plug in the information that you need and voila. It took you five minutes where it would have normally taken you fifty, right? That's the idea here. And this is also something that you can do when you follow up after a class. Again, you know, you can use a campaign for something like that. You can use saved replies for one-off emails that you would find yourself repeating as well. These are infrastructure pieces. These are supporting building blocks that help you to get more done in your business so that you aren't having to repeat yourself and repeat yourself and repeat yourself. You've got a little machine that you've created here with infrastructure that repeats for you to as many people as you would need to repeat yourself to. All right. Really wish that this animation was working, you guys. It's a lot of texts, sorry about that. All right, so there's a lot of questions that we get about how to make sure that you are balancing sort of this idea of your learning curve, you know, of figuring out how to market yourself on the internet, how to set yourself apart, how to do all of these things that the Get Oiling system is capable of supporting for you. And it's really important that you keep a few things in mind. It's actually really not that difficult to have the balance here if you know the things to focus on. So first things first, guys, always devote the majority of your time to those most profitable activities on the first page we covered in this presentation, those IPAs. No matter what, those are the most important things you can do, period, end of story. Now, everything that we've talked about in terms of infrastructure and automation, those are the things that support your ability to do more IPAs, right? If you can go out and invite more people and you've got a system that assists you with the follow-up and assists you with the exposure, you can actually spend more time getting more eyeballs onto your presentation, right? So devote the majority of your time, even if you don't have those tools in place yet. Well, actually, especially if you don't have those tools in place yet. Spend your time in the most profitable activities, no matter what. And I'm talking to you guys with teams now. You should be spending sixty to seventy percent of your time on those IPAs too because your team follows your lead. They see you stalling and managing. They're going to think that that's what they need to do too. And do you want a stalled team of managers who aren't growing? I don't think you do, right? Also, make sure that you're minding your Digital Upline Coach because if you're entering your hours and logging your activity, you know that you're doing the right stuff. If you see your progress bar and you're reaching completion, then you know that the time that you have dedicated this week to your business has been spent profitably. And if you're not seeing that bar move fast enough, then it might be time to reconsider the way that we're spending our time, right? Really important. And it kind of stings a little bit when we look at that again, like the first question that I asked you guys today. You know, how does it feel? Have you ever felt like you have just done all kinds of work, running around with a chicken with your head, like a chicken with your head cut off, and you don't know what you got done? This is how you know you've got something done. You do the IPAs, you log the activity with your coach, the progress bar moves across. It encourages you every day. And for those of you who don't know what this is and don't have it yet, you can go get one for a dollar right now, getoiling.com. Join us for a dollar and you can get a coach that tells you what to do, right? This is really important. And I recognize as well that there's a learning curve here and we need to respect that. So again, don't try to implement a ton of new things at once if technology is overwhelming to you or you feel like you aren't getting enough of your IPAs done, right? Be gentle with yourself. Understand that, you know, we can get done what we can get done, right? And that's it. So spend our time as profitably as possible and then just start hitting away at the things that you want to get done in those blocks of time. You also want to make sure that you are auditing your time. So you're tracking your time, make sure you audit it. What, how did you spend your time after you've audited yourself, right? So ask yourself, what did I do? And what did I repeat the most? And then you can create a tool to save yourself time, like what we mentioned in the previous slide, creating a campaign, a follow-up plan, a saved reply, something to that effect, a funnel. Create one tool, right? So after you've audited your time, create a tool based on the activity that you've already performed, one thing that'll save you time, that will fulfill the repeating of something that you don't have to be there for, right? And then use that the next week to get more done while you're performing those IPAs. Because again, all of this internet marketing stuff, you guys, this is to serve your completion of more IPAs. It's not going to. It's not going to replace it. Logging is never going to replace you having conversations with people and asking them to make a yes or no decision. Right? It supports your ability to have more conversations with people. And so if you don't have the tools and infrastructure in place yet uh, to, to achieve that degree of, um, of lead generation automation, then you've got to go out and meet new people. Until you've built up those things, which you can one thing at a time, blocked periods of time, one thing at a time. Um, and it's actually when you start looking at it that way and you say, okay, I'm going to create a campaign today and you only want to spend an hour on it, you'd be surprised at how quickly you can turn that campaign out, right? As opposed to getting yourself stuck and getting mired in all the distractions. And if you love the way that that tool works, then go and repeat it for other functions in your business and continue to improve on your activities. Then you want to create, and this is a, um, we'll, we'll call this like a weekly method of operations piece. Create one piece of valuable, non-promotional content per week. This could be a blog post or a video, something that's informative, um, something that is helpful to others. Um, this is always a good use of time, but don't again, let it suck up all of your time. Just do it once a week. Create a value content piece once a week, have your engagement and be out there prospecting. And over time, when you're creating value content, this is something that can serve your business exponentially into the future. Because if you go out and you put a video on YouTube, I'm sure people aren't going to necessarily see it at first, but over time they will. And over time, people, because of a video that you created a year ago, 10 people will come to you and say, hey, I've heard of this young living thing. Can you tell me more about it? I think I want to join. Right? So don't spend more than an hour to create this thing. Um, but do it regularly. So write a blog post or create a video, give it an hour a week. Commit to getting better with practice, doing this every week, every week, every week, get better every week, but give it an hour. Okay? It's not something that should take more time than that, because again, the majority of your time needs to be spent in having conversations with more people. And that will lead to more conversations as more people discover it. And that is something that will happen organically. But until those organic results start happening, you gotta move your feet, right? Remember these tools that you have access to? They are here to make you more efficient at what you already do. So if you aren't already doing, i.e. going out and having those prospecting conversations and inviting and sharing and so on. It's not going to help, right? This isn't a, uh, like the truth about websites is it's not an if you build it, they will come thing necessarily. Um, now, if, if you build it and you throw tons of money into ad campaigns and you're optimized and that's not something we're going to get into today. That's an, that, that's a they will come, but it's not just something that poof, it happens, right? These are tools that support your activity. So make sure that your activities are the profitable ones. All right? And when you're learning something new, implement it immediately. This is another really important thing. There's a lot of training. We offer a lot of training. Every single week we come here and like today, we're doing an in-depth training. Next week we'll, um, we'll teach on a couple of lighter concepts and take a lot of Q and A. We do this alternating pattern here. There's tons of training in our back office, lots of things to learn. But here's the thing, you, if you don't have time to implement what's being taught, don't watch the training. Right? You don't need to show up, um, for every training that exists. If you don't have the time to put what's being taught to use. See, a lot of us, we will watch and think that we are building our expertise. But the fact is, is, is the, the knowledge that you consume has an incredibly short shelf life. And the benefit that you will get from having tuned in to watch something so that you can improve yourself or a function of your business. You are only going to get the benefit of that time you just spent if you go out and you do something with what you learn right away. Right? So don't wait to go and, and, and use that prospecting recipe to go and, and, and talk to somebody. Don't say, okay, well, maybe I'll do it tomorrow. No, go, go do it today. Right? If you're going to watch a training on building a funnel, follow the steps, build the funnel. We teach you how to build a funnel in an hour. You could pull it off in an hour too. Make yourself do it. Set the timer, right? If you don't have time to do it, you can watch the recording and we have tons of recordings of great training that you can dive into when you're ready to implement. Right? When you're ready to take action, you go to Get Oiling, um, the, the help section, if you are a member, again, you can start it with a dollar, uh, for a dollar if you're not with us yet. Um, go to the help section, got tons of recordings. Um, go to our YouTube channel, tons of value, tons of recording there. But don't just watch it and, and say you're going to do something later, right? Take action on what you learn and do it immediately. Because what you've done, if you don't, is waste an hour of your time or however long it was that you sat through a training. All right? Now, another thing, you guys, is, is to value your time as if you were already a royal crown diamond and teach others to do the same, to value your time as if you were already a royal crown diamond. Think about that. Like sit with that for a minute. Are you valuing your time as though you already have a royal crown diamond business? If you can start thinking about how you might value your time when you're at that level. How you might honor your time, how you might honor your, um, your quiet time even, right? We're not even necessarily talking about that right now. Your time for self-care, right? Your time for quiet, your time for personal development, honor your time. When you are having conversations with people, when you are inviting people to review information, honor your time and have others honor your time too, because you are sharing something life-changing with them. And you have a business to run and it is a respectful thing for someone to say yes or say no, right? Allow others to respect your time by first respecting your own. And I don't believe that the royal crown diamond you would be looking through their phone while they're on a training, right? Or scrolling through Facebook. The royal crown diamond you would not, uh, be scroll, well, scrolling through Facebook is a pretty common activity. You see a lot of successful people don't really do that. They go on, they post, they engage on their posts, they get out, right? Start looking at it that way. Start embodying the, the activity. And, and consider modeling and, and not talking about runway. I'm talking about looking at what others do and modeling your activities in kind. Right? Look at how your leaders, your top leaders in your organization are conducting themselves online. Look at what they're putting out. The activities are the same for you as they are for them. The profitable activities, same for you, right? As they are for them and, and the ones that got them to where they are. There's no magic here. So value and keep your time as though it is as valuable as it truly is, and it truly is valuable. It's precious time is. All right. So who is ready to get productive? I want to hear some comments from you guys. If you loved what you've learned here, maybe what your biggest takeaway is. Where do you see yourself spending the majority of your time? And if you have any questions about how you can be more productive, if you've got any, you know, any questions about what you've seen here today, want me to recover anything? Go ahead and pop those in the Q and A or in the chat and we will get to those. What we're gonna do now, as we are looking through those things is, um, is we are going to show you, for those of you who aren't familiar, or if you're new and you're just learning about this, some of these features that we've been talking about, right? So, um, the contact manager and the different features there so that you, you know where to go and find them. Now we do have in-depth trainings and how to create these resources, like I said. Um, but we're going to show you where you can find those things that are inside of Get Oiling that can help you save tons of time. All right. I will let you share Greg.
There we go. Okay. Seeing the screen?
Yep.
Cool. All right. Well, there's lots of things we can start with. I think, um, follow-up plans and save replies were a couple of the items you had at the top. Uh, those are here, contact settings and so save replies and follow-up plans. What they, what those are is it's like a follow-up plan, I guess, as it says here. You can, uh, basically automate your reminder list for your contacts. So you can create these, you know, for, for a number of different contacts. This is like an event preparation, uh, new member follow-up plan. They can all have different steps in there. Basically they just package up a to-do list that you could then, then put onto a contact. So that can save you a ton of time. If you always take, for example, the same five steps in person, these are like personal steps, not automated follow-up. Cause you can do that too. You can set it up to automatically email or text people or whatever via a campaign. But this, these are for, uh, actions that you're taking. So let's say you, you have five actions that you take for a new, uh, new member. You want to welcome them. So like here, okay, we're, you know, five days out from the time you add this, you get a reminder to send a thank you mail. Uh, 10 days out, call and discuss the starter kit, 15 days out, call them today. So you can go and edit these and tailor them to how your business runs. Now that there are a few ones that are built in here, these ones that are labeled as Get Oiling, those are the ones that are showing, uh, those, those come with the system, but the rest of these are just, uh, this is a demo account that we have set up here. So yeah, the follow-up plans, um, then you can find a, this is a cool little new feature, little fine box over here too. Um, you can find a contact just by typing there without having to go under manage first. But so now if I go under one of these here, I can say I want to add a to-do and then the follow-up plan list shows here and then boom, all the to-dos will show up under here for whatever, whatever they are. So that saves you a ton of time and then those will be, those will surface to you in your daily activity email as well as on your dashboard. Um, the contact dashboard here. We'll have all of your to-dos for today and you can browse around and pick a different date if you want as well. The saved replies are an awesome way to, uh, template emails essentially. So if you have, so like here's this little, I think we did this several weeks ago, this farmer's market save reply. So you can, uh, automate this, um, you know, of course, if you want to make it a little fancier, put in graphics, whatever you certainly can. But this is just a, a quick, simple farmer's market save reply. This lets you send out, um, templated mail quite easily. So now, now if I'd want to come in here and let's say I want to mail everyone. I can just say, here's my saved reply and, um, where's my farmer's market one? Right here. So click that and it fills it in and I forgot to click in there. So I'll put it at the bottom, but I'll just move it up on top. And so you can see it'll save you some time just basically filling those out. And, um, you know, we've got several built in as well. If you want these nice templates, you can do that too, like, you know, put in a lavender template, whatever. Fills in some graphics for you. So you can, you can copy those and modify them however you like.
So to, to give you guys some context here, so you know, in that recipe that I shared, right? So say you're on Facebook, um, or, or you're, you're just out, maybe you meet somebody at the chiropractor's office or something. You have a conversation with them, you get their information, you put them into your contact manager. And you can, with the follow-up sequence that, that you would normally go through, so share the information, follow up and so on, what Greg showed first, you can apply this to that contact. And that's automatically going to track your activity with your coach, um, if you check off those things that you've been doing.
Hmm. Yeah. And the coach, you mentioned that too. So I've got this set up here. This is your, the digital upline coach. You get, you get one of these, you can choose your coach actually by clicking on your picture and you've got, choose how many hours a week that you're working and it'll, it will, uh, explain to you or, you know, create the number of tasks that are appropriate for however many hours that you want to and choose whether or not you have any business builders on your team. And then you can even choose your coach, which is kind of fun. They, they all provide the same tasks with just the different personality essentially. So I'll switch over here to Coach Croc. He hasn't been, been getting much use. So, uh, they all have different little sayings. They're kind of cute. So this person or this demo account here, this John L. Has completed a few things. So there's, uh, 15 out of 126 points. There's the number of hours you choose determines how many points per week your goal is. And then each task here has an, a points value assigned to it. And you can add your own. That's why there's to-do over here. So if there's something that's like not quite perfect, or you want to put some more details in there, you can hit add and, and type it in and say this is a coaching activity and choose from our very, very long list. Um, I don't know, does this list show up for you? I don't know. Um, there's a very long list here, even if it's not showing up for you about which activity is closely related and then it will, um, automatically pre-fill the activity points down there as well. So then you can get some points, uh, towards that goal. So like if I get a no from a, a prospect worth five points, I'll just say did it. And I could optionally type in a contact name if I wanted to, to, to tie it to a specific contact, cause then it'll show up under their record for later. You can see now that I added five points to my total here and got a little bit closer to the weekly goal. Um, and there's all sorts of activities down here. So it breaks it down into like today's, this week's tasks, this month's tasks. And there's even this year, it's basically the attend the, an annual convention or an in-person or regional training. And there's, there's many of those out there, uh, in the young living world for that. So another, another item which is kind of related, if you're, if you're a team leader and you have many business builders and they have their own Get Oiling accounts. You can connect them here. I think this is on the premium plan. You can connect multiple team members, basically you can connect one. So there's this little team progress tab over here. And so you can see what your team members have been doing, like this is aggregate. I only have one person connected on this account, but this shows you, um, my team member has done these, you know, activities in these categories. And if this were, if we had 10 people here for, for example, or three or two or whatever, this would aggregate them and you could see overall, what is your team doing? Spending 46% of their time inviting and fault, or that's points, I guess. Uh, well, anyway, yeah, 46% of their time inviting and following up. About a third of the time with presentations and meetings and some team leadership, about 20% of their activity as well.
So you can actually see your percentage of how you're spending your time here.
Yes, exactly. So this, uh, and you can see this, I think for yourself as well, but if you have a team member connected, you can click on them and see kind of what they have been doing. You don't get to see the details of it because it's confidential, the contact names and all that. But it lets you see generally what they're doing and then, uh, it orders them. So you can even run cool contests and leaderboards. But if I scroll down, uh, or click this little see my progress link. We can see what your progress history is as well over time. So, you know, there's some, uh, data points that'll track it. And then this is again, this is a demo account. So there's not a, not a lot in here, but it does track it over time for you. Yeah. So that's, that's the coach aspect of it. And you can even go back and see previous weeks if you want to drill in and see uh, what you did last week versus two weeks ago or whatever. So it all keeps it all in there. It's a great database.
And there's a real connection too, from that follow-up plan feature that you demoed first, uh, that connects directly to this coach. So right over here on the to-dos, that second column on the coaching page. When you apply follow-up plans to contacts, such as, you know, when you need to follow up with somebody five days after they've reviewed something or connect with this person for a care call on their, you know, six months, 12 month anniversary. Those things are going to populate, pre-populate on your to-do list. So you will literally have a list of things that you need to do today. Obviously this is a cumulative effect, right? Like it's not automatically going to say this is what's due today. But you can create those things for yourself that work uniquely for you in the way that you build your business.
Yeah. When you're setting up the follow-up plan, you can choose the coaching activity that's most closely related to what you're doing. So if I'm going to say, let's say this is the follow-up with a prospect is the thank you mail. It'll automatically pull in the number of points that, you know, the system offers. So the cool thing about this is you can, you can pick one, because we often get a question like, well, I'm doing something that's really, it sounds really, really close to one of these items that's in this big list. Um, but it isn't quite exactly that. And so you can choose the item that's the closest and then just, you know, describe it however you want to. But, but yeah, so now for this follow-up plan, anytime that I apply it to a contact and I mark this and thank you email done as done. It will, uh, you know, automatically accumulate two points towards your coaching goal for that week, which was really cool. Um, so completely, you know, saves you a ton of time and, uh, yeah, just, just automates that quite a bit. Uh, let's see. So what were some of the other things you were talking about? Oh yeah. So follow-up plans can also, you can also do these on events. This is kind of neat. If you have an event set up, they can have to-do items as well. And when you click add, you can choose a follow-up plan or you can just type, you know, if there's a one-off thing that you need to do there too. So you can, if you're doing or holding events regularly, and I know some of our customer, you know, some of the other Good Oiling members do that. Where they'll have like either weekly or monthly or some sort of regularly occurring event. Well, and they all have kind of the same setup and tear down sort of, uh, steps to them. So you can set them up where you have an, a, a, a follow-up plan for that as well. So like prepare for your, um, you can prepare for the event. Maybe you have to secure the venue. So like, you know, this, secure the venue, invite people to the event. And then you want to remind them a few times and then call them and thank them and send out the free gifts. And so this is actually one of the event follow-up plans we have here for way in the future. If you look at the date, but, but yeah, so, and you can see this one right here has a little number five next to it. What that means is that's, uh, that's the coaching points. In this follow-up plan, we set that up so that once you invite everyone to the event and check done, then that's going to mark five points, add five points towards your coaching total for the week, which is really cool. It's all just check a box and it's done. The event follow-up, uh, plans, of course, that one's not going to show up because it's so far out in the future. But if I go back to the dashboard, there's an events, uh, panel here as well. So you can just check them off, just like you can up here. If I were to add one here, I'll show you how this works. So I'm going to say this is a coaching activity. So I'm going to say this is a coaching activity. Pick something here. So now there's this, well, I guess I didn't pick a contact, I could probably. No, I can't do that actually. Anyway, so I'll just mark it as done and we should end up with five more points here on our, on our total. So yeah, now we're on 25. So it's kind of cool how it's all, all tied together there.
Yeah, and the thing is, guys, if you're just getting started and you recognize that you need to do more of the income-producing activities and you want to spend your time more profitably, really, I think the first two most valuable things that you can learn how to do in this platform is, is, is use the digital upline coach to record your activity and create follow-up plans related to your prospecting and, and your follow-ups. If you could do those things first, you can start getting a clearer picture of what you need to do each day and also not drop the ball with your contacts and so on as, as you're, as you're going through the process. I think we got a question here. Let's see. Uh, Jan says adding the coaching points to the plans is a real time saver. Yeah, absolutely. Follow-up plans are your ticket to efficiency. Because again, like this is where you build systems in your business, right? The reason why McDonald's is so successful is because they have a plan, they have a system for everything, right? Every franchise that's out there, they have systems to follow for every function of their business. And as you, you know, if you're brand new, understand there's lots that you're going to learn, right? But the most important thing that you can learn is that progress is perfection and keep acting on, on what you learn and what you know how to do. But as you get into practice, you'll start to recognize systems that you actually follow organically, steps that you naturally do. Start by building up those follow-up plans so that each time you've got a contact, you've got activity related to it, you got the points value attached and you can just tick those things off and you've, you, you know that you've done the right things and it shows you you've done the right things. Really powerful feature.
Cool. Anything else come to mind for you?
Yeah, there was, there was, just on the, the settings page on the contact manager, this is where you'll find the other things that we talked about today, that, that save you lots of time. So the campaigns, that's a great teaching feature. It's where you can do text or email to inform and to follow up as well. And of course, the follow-up plans is on that page too. And then saved replies. This is, this is the feature where we were talking about, like if there's an email that you find yourself sending out consistently or if you've just chatted with somebody on, on Facebook and they've got 30 minutes right now to view a 30-minute video tool that you have access, that, that shares Young Living, then you can have the link and everything already there in that email and you just get their email, put it in your contact manager and then send it and it's got all the details.
Yep, I can show you kind of how that would work. I don't have a, a follow-up plan that has that language in it, but like I can pull up the prospect here. You know, let's say you're on the phone with them, click on their email address, click save replies and then pick whatever one it is here that you want. We'll just do the farmer's market one again. And you can hit send and boom, it sends it right off. So say, you know, you can, in three clicks, whatever, you can be right there and sending off what you need to there. Another thing is when you're editing a contact or when you're, if you want to keep track of what you've been doing, you know, so, because obviously GetOiling doesn't know when you hop on your cell phone and make a phone call. Like if you click on the person's name and then drill in here, there's some past actions and you can click add. And what this will do is you can note then what you've done, like, oh, I called them, I had a meeting, sent them some mail, there's a task or just a note generally. So I'll just pick like call, said, called him today, spoke for, you know, whatever, just kind of whatever your note is. And you can even backdate it, like sometimes people will batch enter these. So they're like, block off some time, you got your two hours, block off two hours of time, call a bunch of people or whatever tasks that you have at hand and then come back and then enter them into the system. So I could say, I could go backdate this a little bit if I wanted to go back and say I did this earlier today or whatever. I'll just pick now and then it's going to show up at the top, at the top of the list. And this is actually new here too. Now you can filter them as well. So if you want to go back and see, well, I just want to see all the calls that I've made to this person, you can do that. Okay, I mean, I called him there and then I called him back in February of a year ago. So it's a great way to just be able to filter down and see what you've done, filter email, social, all these different categories, you can do that or just hit show all, of course, and it'll go back to, to all of them. So yeah, it's a, it's a great resource to have that all in one place for the contact. Oh, I can't hear you again. You're muted.
I didn't even know we could do that, that's amazing. So that, that little filter button right there, or what, what was it? Let me, those are all of the different categories that you can add in for how you contact somebody. So if you're using Facebook or Instagram to prospect, you could, you could add that and you know that you sent them a message on a certain day.
Yep.
Like that's, that's amazing.
Yeah, you could do that, like, here's Facebook Messenger. Yeah. Talk to them on FB Messenger. Obviously, that's a little redundant with the type, but whatever, there it is and now we can go up and filter by Facebook Messenger. There it is, all your Facebook chats kind of in one central location.
Yeah.
Whatever, notes, I mean, it's all, it's all pretty cool. It's a great way to
Yeah.
zone in, because sometimes past actions can be a little bit, you know, they get a little busy. Because if you say show all, well, you've got your texts mixed in, your tasks mixed in with your emails, which was kind of nice to see the flow of the, what they're getting. And if it's recent content, that's helpful for browsing. But if you just want to narrow it down, like phone calls, that'd be super helpful. Like, oh, and this is of course a fit contact, but I called them today and I called them 16 or 15 months ago, whatever. Yeah, that's, that's
Yeah. You can actually see, so if you send them an email, say like with a link in it, you can see in those actions as well whether or not they open the email. See that, that open and then there's a reply button too, or click, that's clicked rather.
Yep, yeah, the little, they opened it and this is the click. If you click on it, it actually shows you what email was sent and gives you a little bit more detail about delivery or bounced or whatever. So you can drill in on any of these as well. So if you want to do that, you can, you can see that, you know, like with, with text messages too, you can see, you know, those show up as well. You can click on those, see what was sent. And yeah, so it's, it's a great history of all of that. Tasks, same thing. Um, this is something, yeah, and it shows you the point value as well.
Very cool, very cool. Alright, you guys got any questions? This is a super valuable feature, right? What if you, what if you added all of your folks to this contact manager and you kept up with them this way and create that follow-up plan for your prospecting just to start, right? Just to make sure that you are in fact following up with people. If they don't have an hour right now, hey, I'll get back with you tomorrow, no problem. And then tomorrow, hey, I'm back, because you were reminded by your own system that told you what to do. Instead of your boss, you're telling you what to do on your terms, building this business your way. Because you want a business that works your way, right? You've got an opportunity to build it and you don't have to overwhelm yourself if you just focus on learning one thing at a time. And making sure that you always maintain that continuous cycle of those IPAs. Moving from introduction all the way through to decision-making, right? Getting folks acquainted with the information and getting a yes or a no, and then a referral from a no. Most, most important stuff, you guys. Alright, well, if we don't have any questions, we're going to go ahead and wrap. I know we've gone a little bit long today, but I really hope that this has been very helpful for you guys. And we're just so excited to be able to teach these things to you and, and to really show you what works when growing a business and, and to help you see a way to creating more efficiency, more productivity and more success in your business. Awesome. Thank you, Melissa. We are happy to have you here, Susan, you too. You guys, we will be back same time next week for our next weekly work session. If there are any topics that you would love for us to cover, anything that you would like to learn that you don't see in the previous recordings, then shoot those over to us, send us an email, info@getoiling.com. This training today came as a result of a request that came in, I believe, this, this week.
Yeah, it was earlier this week, Monday, I think.
Like, we're listening to you. We're here to teach you what you want to know, so feel free, reach out to us. And even, and guys, this, this invitation is to everyone, whether you're with us yet or not in GetOiling, we're here for you. If you would like to join us, you can go to getoiling.com and get started today for just a dollar. Alright. Bonnie, you have a lot of training to do, piece by piece, you have a lot of actions to take first. Alright, fantastic, right? You guys have a great week and we will see you soon.
Thanks, everybody. Bye.
Bye.